A little bit of.
Does the frame make sense?
So I do want to let the mayor know. I do want to let the mayor know that there's a couple items that we're going to pull.
Not that big of a deal.
No, it's not.
Oh, from the rock. Found it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This particular item did emanate from the Historic Preservation Commission. Their chairperson sent the letter that's attached to your materials in the packet with the desire to have the enabling ordinance that created them, as well as their bylaws, amended to add, be able to add a youth member to their, to their board and commission. And so the process for that really emanates here from the council. They, they were right to bring this forward to me, to then bring to the council for you to study and to determine whether or not this is something that you would permit them to do. And so as you've seen from their enabling ordinance, which I should have included in the packet as well, for you and I apologize for that, they, they have a set number of members, they wanted to take one of the members and convert that into a youth member, as they believe that, as you've seen in the letter, that they'd like to engage the youth in, in the process of helping to preserve history and getting that unique perspective that they normally wouldn't get otherwise. And so tonight, you have the ability to discuss this. We can, you can give some direction to staff, most likely the legal staff, because they're going to have to amend the enabling ordinance, again, to facilitate the addition of a youth member.
Thank you.
Right now, as well, I'm going to do a quick review of, of their board and commission and see where they are with respect to their constituent membership. The Historic Preservation Commission has, as you recall, we, we did get one individual who will be appointed later on this evening, but I think they're still down a member. And yes, they have, currently, they have Cash Parker, CJ Cullman, Melinda Ellsworth, Lauren Cooper, who's the chairperson, and then Matthew Crabtree is also a member. And so they're supposed to have seven members. So they have, they'll have six after this evening, and then that seventh member, they'd like to convert that particular appointment into a youth.
Mayor Protam Russell?
Can I ask a question? What is a quorum for that board? Is, because I know a lot of times they were meeting with four. Did they have, did they have a quorum to come up with this, or?
Good question, Mayor Protam. I am not certain, this particular meeting, whether or not they had enough people, five people, to be present to, to come up with this. I believe that they can have four to, to meet. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm actually pulling it up. Okay. I can't type up my head. If you want to answer that.
Yeah, so I don't know which meeting that they determined that, to come forth with this proposal, whether or not they had a quorum that night.
Okay.
It's a fair question, though.
Important question. Member Martinez?
Would the youth member be a voting member?
Yes.
They would?
Yes.
Okay.
Member Wink?
Thank you. So, in my time on Cultural Arts Commission, when we had a youth member, it seemed that maybe because of their activities at school and other activities, it was a little tough for them to show up. And I think there's tremendous value from youth members on our commissions and boards. And I'm wondering if in our recent revisiting of the procedures and policies for boards and commissions, I mean, we can, maybe we've delineated certain roles for these youth members, and, I mean, are we holding them to the same attendance policies as we're holding other members? Are we, are we actually expecting the certain, the same amount of input and engagement as we are? Because it seems a little tricky for, just, but this is just one experience. And I think this would be tremendous value to Historic Preservation Society. I mean, somebody could be a history major in college, and having had this experience on her city council in her city, or his city, this is valuable. But, I don't know, I just want to make sure that the youth members might be tended to if they need to in a bit of a different way than the regular members, if you will.
Can you elaborate on that a minute? What do you mean tended to?
That the expectations set for them perhaps might be a little bit different, and that they have clearly defined ways that they can contribute to the board or commission that's easier for them to understand, and easier for them to meet, and easier for the board and the commission to understand, as will happen with these youth memberships. Maybe it's specific participation or involvement in some of the activities, but it just seems going to, even just a monthly meeting, once, maybe a subcommittee meeting, it just seemed to me, in that limited experience in cultural arts, that it might be a little tricky for them, youth members sometimes, and that they were missing out on something that they really wanted to be a part of.
Before we get to Member Barantine, why don't we hear from the city attorney, just to get any update?
To respond to, I'm sorry, council member, Mayor Protam Russell, sorry, too many things zipping through my head. To respond to Mayor Protam Russell's earlier question, the commission is comprised of seven members. Appointed by the city council, at least two members should be recommended by the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society. So four members would be a quorum on, or would be a majority to vote. But the interesting thing, when you consider turning one of these positions into a juvenile, is that the term of office of the members first appointed to the Inglewood Historic Preservation Committee shall be for a term of four years. Anybody who's appointed for four years isn't going to be a juvenile by the time they leave, unless you're the only one who's thirty or fewer years on the Historic Preservation Commission, that creates a whole separate set of issues. So if this is something you're interested in doing, we're probably going to need to write a, a juvenile position into the existing. I don't know if you want to change one of the seven members into a juvenile position, or if you just want to create a separate juvenile position, because a juvenile should only serve on a board or commission for one year. I mean, if you have a seventeen to eighteen-year-old, and then as an eighteen-year-old, they come and apply to be a regular adult member. And if you do want that, do you want this as, as somebody who does serve in a lesser capacity? So the way it's currently written is not exactly as Mayor Protam was stating, it doesn't conform itself to a juvenile member.
Member Barantine?
Sorry.
I don't necessarily have a problem with whether the youth member is a voting member or not, and I believe that we've had members as young as twelve go on, too. I think that that's the lowest age that they can go on. So while it is possible to have somebody who can serve four years, I do agree with the attorney that we should at least be aware that, like us, they do get older, too, and so there wouldn't be a youth anymore. Although if they're a youth member when they begin, I would like to at least let, let it be a two-year term, so that we're not trying to get less of a participation. As far as their participation, I do agree that with Councilmember Wink, that we need to make sure that we stay on top of the chairs for all of the youth members, to make sure that they are setting some kind of goals for all of the board, including, including their youth members as well. I would do a little bit better job of trying to get somebody in there. I would like it to be in addition to the seven-member board, for some of the reasons that Councilmember Wink brought up with attendance, and they do tend to have busy schedules, as we all do, but at that age, they tend to schedule pretty, pretty good. So I would like it to, I don't mind if it's a voting member, depending on what the rest of council wants to do. I would like it to be at least two years, and I would like it to be in addition to the seven members that we already currently have, so.
Anyone else? Wait, oh, sorry, Member Questa.
Mayor Olson, and this might be a question for the city attorney. I, I do see the language that you were referencing regarding the four-year term, and as I'm reading, it, eighteen years when appointed shall be for a term of four years, but members under the age of eighteen shall be appointed for terms to expire June first in the following year. So it sounds as though they've got a four-year term, but it expires the next year on June first? So that would be a four-year term, then?
Oh, with the juveniles? That was proposed? The proposed language?
I'm looking at the proposed language.
Yeah, I wasn't reading from the proposed, I was just reading from the existing language.
Very good, thank you. So it sounds like they're proposing a one-year term, then, for the juveniles? Okay. And then prior to that, in the first portion of the ordinance of the proposed language, one member may be under the age of eighteen. So it doesn't seem like it's a locked-in requirement, that they must be, and they could be seventeen and turn eighteen, and it sounds like still hold that position as well. So I think it gives some flexibility there. And I guess my evidence is anecdotal, but in defense of our youthful members making their commitments, one of my neighbors, Scott Gilbert, and my constituents, he's on the library board, and he says their youth member is one of the most reliable ones in terms of making it. So I think if you get the right commitment, that they certainly have the follow-through in, in the right cases. Thank you, Mayor Olson.
Mayor Protam Russell? I agree with the, the things that have been stated, and I, I actually think it's a great idea to get youth on as many of these commissions as possible to get experience, because I actually was talking with a member of the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society, and they're having trouble getting younger people. And so I suggested that perhaps grandparents should take their grandchildren. But I do think it's important that we would open that up, and I think it might be something that the schools would work with us, because, you know, civics and things like that would be an opportunity for them to serve. So I would like it in addition to the seven members. And I, one-year term is probably long enough. I mean, with the, because they could be reappointed, and the truth is, at that age, a lot of young people don't have, stick to it, if you must.
City Attorney? Another? No. Finally noticing them all. Member Questa?
Thank you. As a follow-up question to Commissioner Barantine and Councilmember, Mayor Protam Russell, I like the idea of them serving as the eighth member as well. Would, in your thought on that, would that be as a voting role? Or would that be in a non-voting position?
I think that, you know, perhaps voting would be good, and if there's only one youth member, it's probably not going to influence the direction most things would go, so.
As to that question, my son served on the committee at the REC Center, not for the board, but on their youth board. And then I have had conversations with other youth members, and I think it makes it more of a substantial role for them, an important role for them, if they are a voting member. I think, I don't want to put somebody into a position like that and have them feel as if they are discounted. And you have certain boards, like the Parks and Rec Board, at the time when Joe Black was on there, I knew the, a young lady that was on there, and they were very aware and sensitive to making sure that that person was heard and had a voice, and that made a huge difference in them keeping that commitment. So I don't know whether it's voting, or whether it's something more like, member Wink has brought up. I just think in this particular case, with only one member, it might not be a bad idea to have them be a voting member.
Thank you, Member Barantine.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll, I'll weigh in. I've seen a couple of different boards that have also have youth members, and over the years, some have been, have been just fantastic, and in the recent years, more so than even in the past. So I, I, I would agree with Councilmember Barantine's and Mayor Protam's view, to have an eighth member be allowed for a youth person, so that seven adults are working on this as well, and that we try and, we try and recruit some people for this one. It's been, it, we, we need to get more people on it for the next one. And I've often wondered if we ought to maybe have a, a subcommittee of some folks, or to think about youth, and the way we do all of them, within, you know, how we incorporate them in all of our activities, and present some kind of a program for them that would help them engage more, keep them engaged in a way that makes them feel like they are a part of it, because I know in Parks and Rec, and I don't know, Member Questa, if you've had a chance to meet the youth member there, but she's been phenomenal, and the library one as well, and there's actually been a brother and sister competition, if you remember, Mayor Barantine, when we had that one, and it was very fun. So we can get some really great youth involved. But I, I wonder if even, I could extend further to ask Member Wink, when she's up at CML, to find out if there are cities that are finding some success with this. I know there's often one on youth, I don't want to make you have to go to that one, but I went to one maybe five, six years ago, and everybody was more struggling with it than figuring out, you know. But I would be in favor of an eighth with a youth member and a voting, but I, I would like to make sure this is a robust commission board with some engaged adults who care about the historical stuff, too. Member Barantine?
One of the most disturbing things that happened was a youth member who left the library board, and this was years ago, I'm not outing anybody currently. And when the, when members, two members of that board asked them where they were going to school, and they were not going to school within Inglewood City School, they were going to a private school. And to take a, a young person and say, how come your parents don't support the Inglewood School District? And that is enough to them. And so I think that we have to make sure that the adults, I've seen it when boards are very supportive and aware, and that the adults are acting like adults and mentoring, which is a, is a great opportunity, too. But those kind of comments stick with a, a young person very deeply, and so, and they quit immediately, because they felt, you know, like their parents were being attacked, or they were being attacked, or whatever, they were being dismissed. So I think along with anything that we do with the youth, that we also remind the boards that this is a mentoring opportunity for them, and they should take that very seriously. Young people are, can be very sensitive, and we, as adults, have to make sure that we are taking those opportunities to mentor properly, so we'll just keep that in mind.
So Manager Keck, do you think you have enough to go on with this, then?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thanks, council, for this discussion. I think we have enough information to move forward with, with what has been requested.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Second item is the Board and Commission Report Strategy. City council will discuss how we'd like to receive reports from the city's various boards and commissions. And so there is a little bit of a background on this. We have done various things over the last eight, nine, I'm sure, way before then, too, of different strategies to try to help everyone who is on a board and commission report in as to what's going on. More recently, we've been having different boards and commissions come and report to us at various times. There's also been where we've had a very specific time every month, where city council members are supposed to bring whatever notes they have, and bring them to our study session to do a report in. And then there have been times where it just comes up in council member choices. So I think it'd be good at this point to discuss, how do we want to do this? How do we want to make sure?
I found these in the kitchen.
Mine, thank you. I was just going to get.
Thank you very much.
Like, I'll take them, I need them.
Where did I go?
Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
It's all right. So what, what are your thoughts on this? How would you like to make sure that we are communicating well in between boards and commissions in these meetings that happen? We can also read everything online, but sometimes it's helpful to get a personal update from each member that's a liaison. What are your thoughts about this? Councilmember Barantine?
I think it's important for us to hear from the boards from time to time. I think that they want to make sure that they have an opportunity to address all of council. My take with a board may be different than, there's been concern and comments in the past of having certain members on certain boards, that they would go ahead and sway it one way or the other. And I think to make sure that we have, all have a little bit more peace of mind, that we allow the boards to come and voice their own, have their own opportunity to voice any concerns or issues that they have with council, so that they don't think that it's just getting led through one person. We saw a similar issue happen with code enforcement, where once, when another council member went on there, that the whole direction of the board changed because of a lot of influence, maybe in perspective of that particular council person. So I think, I would love for them to have the opportunity, but I do think we need to have a little bit, I think we need to have a policy of making regular updates for boards and commissions to the whole body, from the liaison as well.
So what, what format would you like that, during council member choice time? Or do you think we should have a very specific time in the calendar every month, is it? Or how would you think would be best?
I'll defer to the rest of council, I mean, whatever, whatever works. I mean, I think that a lot can happen in a very short period of time, so we would have to at least have it once, be once a month, certainly, but whether we would have that at the end of the month, when most of the boards are done, because if we do it at any other time, then we're only getting half of them, and then a lot can get missed by the next time, so.
So no particular preferences, figuring out, okay.
I would like it to at least be once a month.
At least once a month. I don't know which, Member Wink?
I agree with Member Barantine, and I think boards and commissions should have the ability to voice their updates on their own, via their chair, their vice chair, whoever else wants to speak, with council. And I love the idea of it happening maybe at the same, as Member Barantine just suggested, maybe, you know, we, they all meet at different times during the month, and some are the first week, some are over here, and, and then some schedules change. So maybe if we can find something reasonable enough, a date reasonable enough, where we can have all of us, and I think during council member choice time is ideal, to give a moment, I mean, we're liaisons for reasons, and we can share, but, so I think if we share a certain time, and then I think we should have, I think it'd be great that we make sure all the boards and commissions can present and ask questions to us regularly, maybe a little more regularly than is happening now would also be good. So have them present, and have us share for the citizens and for anyone else listening, what we know as the liaisons for these groups, once a month, at least, and on the same night. Otherwise, it's, it's very disjointed. Member Barantine said, I mean, I'm saying this, and where's the context? But if I say this, and Parks and Rec says that, and Cultural Arts says this, all in the same evening, in the same period of time, then it, it gives better context to understanding what's really happening in the city, in, in terms of those boards and those groups.
Member Martinez?
I would echo some of those same sentiments. I think, I, I like hearing from them as a group, or as their, you know, chairs, once a year. I think that, I think that is good enough, but I do think I would like to hear from the liaisons more frequently as well. I try to give updates as the meetings happen, but I think it might be nice that we're all consistent about when we give updates. I think council member choice is a perfect time to do that. You know, all the groups are on different schedules, and I don't want to let too much time go between my meetings, so I don't miss the details. So I'll just continue to do that during council member choice, if, if that works.
Thank you. You're, you're really good at that, and, and you use it both in here and out here for that, so that, that's great. Mayor Protam Russell?
I actually agree with what's been shared. I, I do think it's important for council to meet with the boards, and for the boards to come on a regular basis to meet with council, because we appoint those boards, and, and we do that from like a ten-minute interview, and I think it would be.
And we're good at it, aren't we?
Well, that's what we want to make sure, that, that, you know, it is working, and so I think it would be good for us to meet with them on a regular basis. And liaison reports, I, I think during council member choice is good. And I think maybe if we came up with a schedule, because I tend to, when I'm having the meeting, think about it, but if I don't write myself a note, I generally tend to forget about it. And, and one thing that I've asked, and, and really, what are the types of things that we need to be paying attention to? I mean, when I first got put on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, I was the alternate, and I really had no training at all, and, and things have changed quite a bit since then, so, but is there any protocol or anything about what liaisons will do? I mean, in our board, and, and we really haven't had board and commission training yet, correct?
Are you asking the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Funny you should ask that.
Go for it.
Actually, Councilmember Barantine asked me to research this last November, and yet we had so many things going on, that I think that my answer just got lost in all the stuff that was happening. But there is, there are only three boards or commissions that have a, that have a designated role. The Code Enforcement Advisory, Water and Sewer, and the Malle Trust Fund, although that person there is called a trustee. Those three are actual voting members, and in my opinion, those three positions needed, need to be added to your list of appointments. So when you're appointing every other voting member, the council member needs to also be appointed as a voting member. If you want to only appoint them as a voting member for the term of their seat, because they're there as a council member, you can do that, however you want to do it. But it needs to be recognized that, that they are by charter or by code mandated to be a member of that board, so not showing up impacts quorum. It, it's a pretty big deal for the people who, who agree to serve those roles on those three. The rest of the boards and commissions, the liaison, there is no designated role for the liaison. So typically, a liaison is understood to be someone who goes, just gets information and brings it back to their own board. And that's what I, what I interpret the code, since it, since it has no actual information about the liaison, I just interpreted that this body, at some point historically, wanted the council to have greater insight into what was happening on the boards and commissions, and just said, hey, let's split them all up, and let's all have somebody there, that you're not there as voting members. And of course, the, the agency situations are totally outside of everybody's control, because those are created quasi-ordinance and quasi-state statute, that's a whole nother ball of wax. But at this point, what we're putting into the Boards and Commissions Training Manual is that the liaison's role is to be present, to take notes, to advise when, when the city council is working on something that the board or commission should be involved in or should be aware of, and relay information from the council to the board or commission, for example, to the REC Commission, that we're looking at a Parks master plan, and what are the, what are the REC Commission's thoughts on that, for example. So those kind of communications from the council, but also, if the board or commission at the end of every meeting says, this is information we'd really like to get back to the council, it's just a quick, you know, two or three sentences, kind of like what Amy does, just updating, hey, we did meet, these things came up. None of which, none of which prevents each board and commission from having at least an annual opportunity to come forward to the, to the council and, and speak on their own.
Okay, and actually, the ones that you listed, do they say tenure as council member on the list? Is that? I did not know that the liaison was a voting member for Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. I'm, and I actually, I, I did know that I'm on the Malle Center Trust Fund Board also. I did know it there. That board is smaller, but I didn't realize it on the Code Enforcement.
The, I just closed my, just a second, I can pull that back up and tell you exactly what the language is on, on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, because of all of the boards and commissions, I find that language the, the most vague. But basically, Code Enforcement Advisory Committee states that there shall be a board, and there shall be two members of council who participate. It's kind of weird language, but there's no reason for putting it in there unless the intention was that these two council members were part of the board. That's the only way I can interpret it. It's much clearer on Sewer and Water Board that two members of council. The fact that it's worded in all three cases, that it's a member of council, once they are no longer a member of council, they're no longer a member of the board.
Okay.
The mayor situation, then, and again, you, you held all these roles for mayor, the ma, there's three or four boards and commissions where, because you're the mayor, you have to go to all these boards and commissions. It does- once they are no longer a member of council, they're no longer a member of the board.
Okay.
The mayor situation, then, and again, you, you held all these roles for mayor. The ma, there's three or four boards and commissions where, because you're the mayor, you have to go to all these boards and commissions. It doesn't necessarily set you up to be a voting member. It just says that the mayor shall be there and it changes. That's a discussion to have later. But again, it specifically says the mayor. So you assume when the mayor switches positions, somebody else switches into that role.
Point of information, is the additional person for Code Enforcement written into the charter?
No. The Code Enforcement Advisory Committee is, is ordinance.
And the ordinance happened when I was on council before. Because people thought, in the, in the grand scheme of ideas, apparently convincing people of ideas, it can become a dangerous thing. So they decided that two members of council needed to sit on advisory council, which I thought was kind of weird. But we did it by ordinance and I don't believe that that person, or even when there were two people, were ever voting members. We never did a vote piece of that. And I think when we discussed that a couple of years ago, we said, well, you know, that was whatever crazy stuff was going on at the time. There were a lot of citizen involvement stuff going on and things that had happened from elections. So I think we all decided that we needed to go back to just one as a liaison. So I don't know how we would undo that. But I don't think it was ever the intention for that person to be a voting member. But that's up to this council to decide if you want to clarify that.
The way it reads right now, seven members appointed to city council to overlapping two-year terms, three ex officio staff members appointed by the city manager. And the fact that it's using the language ex officio, I interpret to be non-voting. And then two council liaison members. And the way I'm reading this, I'm interpreting it, the seven members appointed by city council and the two council members are voting members, the way it's currently written. And that the three staff members are clearly not because they are labeled ex officio. Again, it's the vaguest language of all of them. And if you want to clarify that, change that, do anything, it's not that difficult. It's just, you, just tell me what it is you'd like to do with it.
I'd like to hold this for a second because actually we've gotten into the next item. Which is perfect segue, but I want to finish this one out. So Member Sierra, can you?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, what I was going to say is I agree with Mayor Protem Russell, as well as the Madam Attorney. I do believe that there should be a scheduled time, just to show that we value the time of the boards. Obviously, they're citizens and they are taking up their time out of their day to, to meet. So whether it's during a study session, we should give them the time to actually voice where they're at. And also possibly provide guidance to the point of Madam Attorney about what they're working on. So I definitely believe it, yeah, that we should at least listen to what they're, they've been working on.
Councilmember Questa?
You bet. Thank you. I like the idea of the board, a member of the board or the board in its entirety presenting directly to us. I think it builds some connection between us and the boards and sometimes I think that that can be lacking. I would think that we would need to put some definitions around how much communication are we going to have? If we have each board present during one particular evening, I think it could stretch on. If we start to get into Q and A and back and forth, and then even beyond us asking them questions, are they looking for guidance from us too? Would it be that, that open two-way dialogue? Which again, that, more than happy to have it if, if that's how it's set up. But it, it could, I would think, just stretch into a fair amount of time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I, I was hearing that we all do want to hear from the boards and commissions throughout the year. Maybe not all in one night because that probably is not the most efficient use of time. And then secondly, that we will commit to giving updates when we have our council member time. And I can prompt each one of us to remember that during council member time. Just remember to tell us anything from your boards and commissions if that's helpful. Or we can even put it on the agenda as, don't forget, any, any updates from boards and commissions. Does that sound good? Do you have any input?
Yeah, just, just one point. So what would be helpful? Because I've, I've sit on a couple, I just observe a couple of boards, I don't sit on them. But I sit, have sat with them. And I think one of the things that's going to become critical is for the liaison to that particular board or commission to encourage them also to schedule a time. Before, it got to the point where I did a call for, for boards and commissions to indicate a, a time they'd like to come. And very few of them said, oh, take me. And so I basically had to say, hey, Board X, you coming tonight? Board Y, you're, you know, two months down the road. So please, if you are a liaison, which many of you are, please remind your chairperson to schedule a time to, to, to come to the council on a study session night.
Good point. Member Wink, and then we'll-
Quick. Is it most efficient that we remind them or that we just set a schedule every year as the city government?
You know what I wonder? Mayor Protem, why don't you weigh in and then I'm going to make-
I was just going to suggest that perhaps you and I look at, and sin, work out a schedule and then let them know.
It's a great idea. I also think that your boards and commissions may have certain times when they know they want to be coming because things are happening and there's some, and so let's, let's figure it out. But Mayor Protem and I will work on some ideas around that and leave some flexibility as well for things that could come up, that they just want to hear. Like I, I remember KEB coming when they were not going to do the, the golf course, the golf race anymore, the golf tournament race. Then we moved to a race and they wanted to get some ideas from council. And it happened very quickly and that needed to be accommodated for. So those kinds of things can happen. Great. Let's move on to Agenda Item Three, which is our liaison discussion, which we've already begun a bit. Thank you for giving us input, Frat任女McKinney Brown. So off the bat, yeah.
I just have one other position to add because if we need two liaisons on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, at this point, there's only one.
So here we are. I think it's helpful to know that three, three positions are voting members that we need to take into account. I haven't looked at how those are dispersed or if they're the same person or not. But that's something we probably want to be aware of. So looking at this, any particular adjustments that you want to make? I want to make sure that Member Sierra has some opportunity to be serving on any of these. Any thoughts? I'm happy with what you have. Member Sierra?
I guess I could just make a comment. In terms of coming back to council about which boards I would be interested or committees I would be interested in, the three that I identified were the Transportation Board, Parks and Rec. I, I know that they are meeting on the same Thursday, so they're in conflict. So obviously, Parks and Rec is something I definitely would be interested in. And then the third was Code Enforcement. So those are the ones that fit my schedule. I, I was looking at the Budget Advisory Committee, that actually does fit my schedule as well. So I know that there's an open spot in that with them. So that definitely will work for me as well.
So Parks and Rec and Code Advisory is what you're suggesting? And E-Tech? But the E-Tech and, and Parks and Rec actually conflict with each other? So you prefer Parks and Rec?
Well, I would, yeah.
Or either what you'd be willing to do either?
Exactly.
Great. Member Questa?
Thank you. I have difficulty making that Thursday meeting for Parks and Rec. And they're a tremendous group and it's great what they do. And I, if the opportunity presents itself, I would prefer to take another one. They deserve a council member who is able to make every single meeting and I have not been able to. And Frank, I felt guilty about it. I'm not sure, will there be a reshifting of some of your boards with you taking the mayor role?
Yes, I would like to get off a few.
If Library happens to free up, because I know that's-
I definitely have said, yeah, I cannot serve on that one anymore.
And if, if that is the case, I would certainly throw my name and, or my hat in the ring on that one.
And just for a point of information, I did say that if you did not want to do that board anymore, that I had some interest in it. But I would defer to our new council member here, since you have that in your schedule. So I would withdraw my request to be considered for that board because I think that would be a nice fit for you if that fits in with, with your schedule. So I just wanted to withdraw.
Let's do this. We have 20 some minutes left. Let's start at the top and go through and make sure that we have everybody that has what they want, okay? Or what they think. So the Alliance for Commerce, we have Member Wink. Will that continue?
That schedule is killing me. Yeah, I can't.
Okay. Is there anybody else who can do Thursday at 11:30?
I love that group, but I just can't.
Was, was somebody filling in for you?
No, I've been squeezing and stretching and going.
It's difficult.
And they're, they're really well organized. They're, they're doing really amazing, exciting stuff, but it's just a, yeah, it's a tough schedule.
I don't know, for some reason, I thought Mayor Protem Russell was on there. Did you attend a few?
She attended a few.
I attended for her and-
Oh, that's what I was saying.
So that, I, yeah. I would be available for that one.
Would you?
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't really want to hold. I kind of got my schedule cleared. I kind of, but I'll, I will do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then the next, that's great. Thank you. And then there's, we have to, tonight we have to talk about the Transportation Forum, right? So that'll be- Go ahead.
Just so you're prepared to go into the meeting later to, to make the appointment, it's by motion. It's just a requirement of our agreement. And so the Arapahoe County Collaborative Transportation Forum is new. Right now, Mayor Olson has been attending the early stages of that. But those meetings are once a month for the Executive Committee and they meet on Wednesday afternoons. Kind of, kind of long. I think they're probably going to continue with that two, two o'clock in the afternoon meeting. Yeah.
It's right smack in the day, right?
They had a, a long chat about that, but there's, I think, 17 Executive Committee members. And they decided, yeah, we'll just keep meeting on Wednesdays from two to five, or two to four.
So this is an outgrowth of Dr. Cog and helps make decisions regarding our part in it. If someone would like to do it, I'm glad to step aside from it.
Are you going to be staying on Dr. Cog?
I will, yeah.
Okay, then probably you should, I think that member might be consistent with that since that information is consistent, so.
It isn't required, but-
Well, I know, I didn't, I thought it would be consistency sake.
If somebody, does somebody else really wanted you, Dr. Cog? Because we can, yeah, you do. So you'd have to go to three, there's three meetings a month.
Yeah, but they're not at two in the afternoon.
Yes, this one is.
Oh, this one, in addition to the four o'clock on Wednesday?
One of them's at four and another one's at six, yeah. I, I think I would like to serve it out the rest of the year because we've started with this thing with the forum and I, I want to sort of see it through. But it is an awful lot of time. Okay, well, we need an alternate though. We do need an alternate, both for that and, and Dr. Cog. Would you like to be the alter, alternate?
I would love to.
Yes. Or-
For the which one?
For both and Dr. Cog. Because we haven't had an alternate for both.
Yeah, what do you think?
That's fine. I was just going to say I would be the alternate for the, for the Transportation Forum.
For the forum?
Could be split up.
We could, we could do that.
And then Mayor Protem could do the Transportation Forum and I could do the alternate for Dr. Cog? And we can just-
Sure.
Now, information, again, if it's connected with Dr. Cog, I would like to see as much consistency as possible between the two groups.
That kind of makes sense. Because a lot of it, I mean, is a lot of what the Dr. Cog meeting's going to, you know, is it going to transcend these Transportation Forum meetings? And is she going to be at a disadvantage or me by not going to the other one?
Yes and no, because it's, it's its own thing with the, and Dr. Cog, so.
According to what we read and, and when we passed that a couple of weeks ago, we, the forum would have, Dr. Cog sees the big picture. We would see the picture for our specific area. And so-
It is possible.
That's why the consistency, I think, is important.
It is possible. Actually, there's another reason for why it could be split. So it, it's enough. So if you would like to do forum, Mayor Protem, I'm glad to have you be on liaison for that as an alternate. And Member Wink for the others.
Maybe it gives me an opportunity to have coffee with the Mayor Protem every month then.
Sure, and share. Actually, and Manager Kek knows a lot of what's going on in this too. So I, I work with him a lot for the forum to figure out what are, what are we going to be presenting or making sure our interests are presented. Let's move on to Budget Advisory. We have Mayor Protem Russell and Member Wink?
Yep.
Does that still work?
Yep.
Okay, CML Policy Committee, it, it actually is Member Martinez. And we need an alternate, but you would like off of that, is that correct? Member Martinez? Okay. Would somebody else like to serve on the CML Policy Committee?
It's like four times a year, twice a year.
Maybe, three, three usually, but-
Yeah, it's not very often.
It's a Friday-half day often.
Yeah, usually like half a day.
I would love to do that if no one else is dying to do it.
CML Member Wink, anyone else? Anybody okay with that? Right, Code Enforcement. Mayor Protem Russell?
And, and actually-
Sierra is interested.
Member Sierra?
And Member Sierra. And so we don't have an alter, we don't have two on this, right? That's the agreement that we just talked about. So we only, so you have to, would you like to give it up or would you?
We can both be on it.
According to the attorney, she just said we need two.
Both are voting? Not? I thought the council was, okay. Hold on a second. We had a whole conversation.
What I said was, the language, the current language of our code reads that there are seven members appointed to city, appointed by city council, three ex officio staff members and two council liaison members. And the way I interpret the way this is written is that the, the two council liaison members are both voting members.
All right, so we'll take both you. Onto Cultural Arts?
I still want to keep up.
Okay. Dr. Cog and our alternate will be? Member Wink, Ingrid Housing Authority, Member Berantine? You're still on?
I am.
Right, just checking. Firefritters Pension, I think that's a gift I get, right?
Yes.
Mayor Russell, Mayor Protem? Historic Preservation Commission, we do not have anyone. That's new. Meets on Wednesdays at 6:30.
Third Wednesday at 6:30.
Do you happen to know how long they meet?
You can't do both CEAC and that because they meet at the same time.
Member Questa, do you have any?
They do, I trust her on that one.
Put you on Library, right?
I'm hoping to get it on Library.
Okay. You can be on more than one.
Coming and going when she's-
Many of us are, Questa. Can we twist your arm a bit? Would you consider it?
Sure.
All right, great. Thank you. And if it doesn't work out, we always try and figure something out. Keep Inglewood Beautiful, Member Martinez, you're still?
Yes.
Yep. Malle Center Trust Fund. Mayor Protem Russell. That's still a go, right? Non-emergency Employment Retirement Fund. Member Berantine, that's still a go. Parks and Rec, we have now moved Member Sierra into that, right? And I will be on, there's the next two are mandatory, Public Library Board. Now we have Member Questa wanting this one. So we will gladly give that to you, right? And then the next one's E-Tech. Martinez?
I still want to keep up.
Still on it? Urban Renewal Authority, Member Berantine, yes?
Yep.
Water and Sewer, I will be on by mandatory. Councilmember and Berantine, is that correct?
What did you just say, sir?
You are also on, yep, Water and Sewer. City School Committee is Martinez and Berantine?
Yep.
And Hospital Liaisons is Olson and Berantine?
You know, I have not gotten any notification on any of the meetings for the, the hospital thing. So if you could please make sure that I'm, I'm getting those, because-
We haven't had one.
We haven't had one, that's why. So I, I think-
Well, but any of the activities that have gone on, I have not been notified, so.
Yeah. Member Berantine, that's true for me too. I, there haven't been any, so there, you've not been left out of anything. This is one that I think we probably, it would be good for maybe that her, both she and I to meet with the two folks there and yourself?
There have actually been several, several functions that I know that you were able to go to. I was not notified, so I think I'm just making the request.
Oh, I've only gone to ribbon cuttings, but-
You would go ahead and, yeah.
Also for the South Platte Working Group? Yes, that is not on here either. The South Platte Working Group is not on here. And I don't know if it ever really, how it ever came to be. But the mayor has always gone in the past and that's how I got on it. I think because then Mayor Jefferson maybe didn't want to go, but I kept, I kept going.
I think the way that the agreement is written, and I'll have to find that agreement because it's an older one, I think it does stipulate that it's the mayor or Mayor Protem.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll check, I'll check on that.
Except for the group is open to the entire public and has that huge, huge amount. And we have never noticed this meeting and I've asked several times just to have the information for when they're meeting. So since they are acting as an advisory piece, it is a public group and anybody actually can go. I think we ought to at least make sure it gets on the list and that we start to put that notification out would be great.
Great. So I think we've got them all filled. Member Wink? Did you have something?
No. Oh, I beg your pardon, no.
That's right. Anyone else? All right. We don't traditionally do council members twice at this point. We'll go do it inside, but city manager, anything in particular or?
No, thank you for this. This is helpful. I was able to take enough notes here to get this completed. We'll send the completed form back out so you can have it again and know who's, who's who.
City Attorney, anything in particular? All right. Thank you. We will close- City Attorney, anything in particular? All right, thank you. We will close this meeting and move next door in 10 minutes.